Welcome everybody to the Planning and Infrastructure Committee of Ramsgate Town Council. Wednesday, the 1st of October. Welcome to those present and anyone who's watching online. I hope everyone makes sure their phones are switched off or switched to silent. And I'll pass over to Deputy Town Clerk for apologies.
Apologies from councillors Auburn and Wing.
Any declarations of interest? The minutes, can we agree the minutes of the meeting of the 10th of September as the true record? That proposal, second of.
I don't think so.
Well, I'll second all those, however.
Although can I just point out that on those minutes, I also gave my apologies and they're not written on there.
Right.
I did get.
Here.
I thought you were up last week.
You were here. You were here.
In that case, I should be.
You should be down as present then, but you're not either, you're not either.
Yeah. You always come first on the list as well.
So that would have been apologies.
No, because I was here.
Okay. Councillor Nickson's definitely here.
Whatever, I remember.
Okay, we won't sign the minutes, Chair, and I'll amend them and then I'll get you to sign them later.
Thanks, apologies for that thing.
Hand it over to Deputy Town Clerk.
Okay, the next item is the Sealing Project Update. Committee are asked to consider whether you would like to send a representative to one of the open floor hearings to be held in person in Sandwich on the 11th to the 13th of November 2025, or via Teams meeting as detailed in the Rule Six letter associated with the item. The open flooring, the open floor hearings will take place at the Discovery Park Visitor Centre between those two dates, 11th to the 13th of November. These are blended events you can attend in person or join virtually via Microsoft Teams. I'm reading notes from the Town Clerk, by the way. They are for interested parties, individuals, groups or organisations to raise any relevant concerns or provide further detail on issues relating to the Sealing Project. The examining authority has already read written submissions, so oral contributions should add explanation rather than repeat prior comments. Issues specific to Kent highlighted for examination are: construction impacts on socio-economics, including tourism, Minster Marshes, concerns over fuel importation, ecology and flood risk, Richborough, Roman Fort and Saxon Shaw remains, heritage setting effects, public rights of way around Kent, including effects on wellbeing and recreation, Pegwell Bay and Goodwin Sands Marine Conservation Zone, biodiversity and ecological effects and flood risk at Minster Marshes. For registration to speak at a Kent hearing, we must register by the 8th of October. Observers don't need to register, though the inspector asks people attending in person to do so for seating arrangements. It's not clear if we can send multiple representatives. Would anyone like to attend and would anyone like to speak at these events? Your Town Clerk also plans to attend these events as an observer. So for this committee to decide if anybody would like to attend.
Does it, do you think it means every day?
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
If it was like the Munster ones, you could attend by the day, couldn't you?
You could, you'd want somebody there.
Three days.
Same person, wouldn't it?
They left on the 13th, probably three days.
Yes.
Wondering whether it was just three days in total.
Members, within the agenda item, Town Clerk has put to send a representative to one of the open floor hearings to be held in person. But if you wanted to go to more than one, I don't see any reason why you wouldn't be able to.
Have you got anybody to go, Chair?
I was just about to ask that, councillor Shank, is there any volunteers to go?
I'm very sorry to say that I'm at fault, I can't, otherwise I would happily, but I'm afraid I can't.
That's lost.
I think some of us who put in submissions as individuals or on behalf of other groups also have the option to go. And I think one of those is councillor Wing, who may well want to go.
Probably not for the whole three days, just for one of the days, maybe.
Okay.
And I would need to look at my diary and perhaps clear it, but I wouldn't mind going for one day. Because you can go online as well, can't you?
Yes.
So I should try.
Can I suggest, Chair, we open up to the rest of the councillors who aren't here as well, the people interested?
Yes.
Chair, I've got several objections, I've been to somebody's government inquiries. At least we have a chance to have a say. Like we say, if we can open up to other councillors, if we... I think we do need to send somebody.
Are you, are you inclined to go?
Well, yes, I think I'd let them all have a chance of going. But if nobody can, I don't mind not being to the government before, but I'd need to have bullet point because I don't want to go off on a tangent, I want to stick to what's happening. Because it's such a destruction of habitat, Pegwell Bay. I mean, you're only going to watch that, I was down on that protest that day and there was a lot of people there.
I think speaking at the event is a different issue.
Well, I've done one or two before.
Yeah. So I think if you want to speak, we have to register that.
Yes, well.
And you're not supposed to speak about anything that we've already dealt with, which are the difficult, because I'm not sure.
Yes.
Well, as you say, if it opens up to everyone, you see who wants to go.
Yes. Can we do that?
Can we send a committee, you'd like me to send the email out to all members, inviting all members to decide.
I think councillor Shank was inclined to go.
Yeah.
Chair, what I'd like to say, because it's a long-winded process. If other councillors can't go and they've got a point of interest in that, I wouldn't mind bringing that up.
Okay.
Because that means we cover all of us, it's not just me, it's all of us. It's such another area.
So councillor Shank will go, necessary.
Can I walk? Could we make sure that the person who's going is able to fill up those who seem to not experience the same points? Possibly in comprehensive language.
With councillor Wing. But councillor. I haven't spoken with her about it, but I know she put in a submission of her own and she's very knowledgeable about it. So I imagine she would want to go if she can fit it around her own work.
Yes.
You're reporting back for people volunteering, but I can understand why you want.
Well, that's all to me. A bit of eyes on that one.
Okay.
Can we mail, you're going to send that?
Yeah, so if members, if you leave it with me, I'll discuss with the Town Clerk and we'll come up with a plan to. The Town Clerk's going as an observer, yes. So the second part of this is to receive a note, a short presentation from TDC. Okay, this was presented by Ian Livingstone at Parish Forum meeting last week. It touches on the Rule Six letter that you suggested. The Rule Six letter is the one inviting you to attend. And the proposed amendments to the former hoverport land, which you are about to consider. That's the next section. So this is what Ian Livingstone from TDC shared at the Parish Forum. So yeah, so this is really repeating what we had before, this is to note.
I mean, one of the big changes is the hoverport, isn't it? They are now wanting to, which I know it's delicate, but it is so lovely being delicate.
In the next part of this item, Laura's given me some notes for it, sorry, Town Clerk has given me some notes for it. So for the presentation, there aren't many pages, are there, Dean? It's got maps that you've probably seen before, I would imagine. Detailing it, and this is just to note, so if you want to propose a second to note here.
Chair.
Yes.
People don't realise that Minster Marshes is going to have a bit of concrete block there. Probably thicker than this one, opposed to all that wildlife.
I think we're, but we do appreciate, I think we're actually past that point at the moment.
As they expect us to do or try and do something.
I think all of us have put in submissions.
Yes.
And we as councillors have put in submissions.
But I'm not, I'm not sure that there's any point in going over our objections again at this point. But I do understand what they are.
Fine. You're fine, I don't give up.
Right.
So for committee to know this, please.
Oh.
Noted.
Noted.
Right, the third part of this item is to receive the note letter BN020026 in which it's reported that the applicant wants to make five amendments to the DCO application. The examiner thinks the changes are manageable but requires more evidence, consultation and timely submission before deciding whether to accept them. Further notes on this from the Town Clerk is: National Grid electricity transmission plans to request five changes to its development percent order application, including alterations at access points, substations, archaeological sites and a railway bridge. The examining authority has reviewed the proposed changes and concluded they are not so substantial as to create a fundamentally different project, but each change raises specific issues, e.g. environmental impacts, land acquisition, effects on residents, heritage sites or habitats that need further justification and consultation. The letter also sets out the expected timetable for examining the changes, which is late 2025, early 2026, and stresses that the applicant must submit all material by November 2025 to avoid delays. The only change that affects Kent is at the hoverport where widening the access route at Pegwell Bay to avoid salt marsh has been requested. This would take in a larger area than before and raises concerns about recreation and wildlife impacts. Increased compulsory acquisition powers would be required for the project as this is TDC land. You will have seen in the earlier slides from TDC what the increased area would look like. So this is to receive the letter and note the information. The actual letter was 44 pages long, I believe, Dean, wasn't it?
Lovely.
But that was shared with your agenda. Right, so that's to receive and note that.
We note. Everybody happy to note that?
Yes, thank you.
So it affects us with hoverport. Are we on to planning?
Are you okay, Dean? Yeah, so just to open any applications to look at this evening. First one is 143 to 147 High Street. Application for the reserve matters of outline application OLTH21708. The direction of a four-storey block containing six two-bed flats and four one-bed flats, including access, appearance, layout and scale, following demolition of existing building for the approval of landscaping. It's in the conservation area and the reserve matters are for the approval of landscaping. Called in by councillor Austin, reason for calling in conservation area and impact on neighbours. Note that TDC granted previous outline application OLTH201708. A decision was made before RTC could comment.
Thank you. I just wanted us to have a closer look at it because it's going to happen and we want to make sure that it doesn't, that it's not overcrowded, it's not overlooking, it fits in with the conservation area, all those sorts of things.
We're only looking at landscape though.
The overall design a bit, I think, the landscape. So, and yeah.
It's pretty hideous at the minute, I see that.
Can we zoom back in, please, Dean, a bit more? Okay. So they've got some planting lot. Instal at the side. Interesting hexagon. No, I think it's nine-sided cycle store, storage.
Very enough bird boxes and sparrow boxes as well.
And stuff at the back.
Chair, can we see where it is in the High Street thing?
It's a Chinese restaurant.
I know it's the.
It's the old.
The old.
Not the Old Eagle pub, is it?
No. It's townless.
Oh, town.
Yeah. I mean, we can't see the layout of the flats on this drawing to see how it relates to the landscape, but. Let's move again. Has anyone got any comments to make about the landscape?
If they do that, it looks okay.
Yes.
In my experience, my very limited experience in my own street, what they say they'll do and what they actually do may turn out not to be the same.
I'm just, is there any parking at the front? Is there? No, no parking at all.
No, not as far as I'm aware.
That's interesting.
Some of the things that.
It could have been. Yeah.
There's six flats, isn't there?
I think so, yeah. Okay.
Chair, it was the old Labour Club, there's been quite a few clubs and there is parking space in front. Knowing people with the building flats, they've probably come up to the edge of the pavement and been over the park. People don't seem to worry about that anymore. Can I just have a look at that building again, Dean, town? That's what it looks like today.
If it's, I mean, if it's landscapes, you know, as much as it looks like it's going to be, then I have no comment.
I don't think, I don't think we can say. It will be an improvement on what we've got in my mind.
Oh, we don't exactly know what those grey patches are in front. They could be tarmac, like it is at the moment. Do we? I imagine, is that the pavement or is that part of their land? No, I think that's part of their land. That is parked on at the moment and I imagine it will be parked on again.
I should imagine it's going to be totally parked, isn't that right?
Yeah. We could make a comment on. Well, that bit of the front.
Is that going to be used as a car park or not?
Yeah, because if it's, if it's not intended to be a car park, they could bring the plant or some other planting forward to the back of the pavement.
Well, if it is intended to be a car park, it would be nothing nice.
Councillor Shank, sorry.
It was all amenity. We pulled that one down on Elm Avenue for what? It lays empty, so nobody can use it. That was a amenity hall which we all used. Now anybody wants a hall, you've either got to go to Mansden in the village when we had all this here. We can't make anything work in Elm Street.
Woodford.
Amity, Amity Hall, you use it.
Well, I was there last week.
We use it quite a lot.
I was there last week for a Ramsgate Society meeting or the week before. Well, I don't suppose if it was thriving, we'd ever be wanting to sell it.
Exactly. And Radford House as well.
Indeed.
Got no comment proposed by councillor Nickson, seconded by councillor Austin, if you have your.
Do you want to do anything about the parking, just very quickly, do you want to say?
We are, I'd like to ask, yes.
Yeah, we are.
Yes, the grey section.
Out of the back of the town.
The street, it's better. So you can say, no comment with regards to the rear, however. However, at the front, we'd like to see more.
If they are parking on it.
And we'd like to know what the grey area is.
If they are parking on it, they will need.
Let's change it that.
A dropped curb somewhere, a locking.
Yes. So I've changed it, so if anybody wants to know.
So.
That's fine.
I've got no comment, I've got no comment regards to the rear planting, etcetera. But more planting would be nice at the front, I would reword this. And what are the clarification on the grey, what the grey areas are for? I can, I can call the planning officer to find out about that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I can propose that, have we got a second, Chair?
Yeah, I've got that. Councillors Nickson and councillor Austin.
Right, and all those in favour?
Yeah.
Am I upstanding because I've probably known the owners?
Should that have been declared at the beginning?
I'm ready. Okay, it's free, am I, I guess. I'm staying.
Okay, members, your second application is 27 Chapel Place. Application for listed building consent for external works, including restoration of existing windows, reinstatement of light wells to the basement and addition of windows, removal of existing rear extension, replacement roof to single-storey extension, retention of existing flagpole to front elevation, replacement of rainwater gills, works to existing roof and chimney stack, reopening of rear boundary wall together with internal alterations to include structural supports to basement, plastering addition of insulation, replacement doors, part retrospective. Solicited building in conservation area called in by councillor Austin. Reason for calling, Ramsgate Town Council expresses its support for the proposed restoration work outlined in the attached heritage statement, recognising it as an excellent example as a kind of restoration we would like to see carried out on more of our historic buildings in Ramsgate. Is that something you would want to propose?
That was, that was a phrase that was suggested to me, I think possibly by councillor Quaiton. I just said, is it worth bringing this to committee? I don't want to criticise it, quite the reverse. It's Rebecca Woodmore's, it's nice and I think she's done a wonderful job.
I thought you were sorry.
I was, yeah. It's absolutely, if we could encourage, if we could use it as a template and say to other people who run historic buildings, this is what you need to be aiming for.
You could have that as your resolution comment to TDC if you wanted to propose it, that wouldn't be a problem, thank you.
Well, I'll have to propose that.
I thought the Ramsgate Design and Heritage Forum had some issues with it.
Well, they know great deal more about those matters than I do, but from what I can see, it looks fabulous.
Yeah, I thought heritage state was, you know, God, fascinating.
Yeah, but they obviously may.
Okay.
Felt problems with it that I wouldn't be aware of.
But we, yes, we support this.
As, as I read out, you'll need a second for that. Councillor Quaiton. And.
Those in favour? Yes, I know the owner, but.
And councillor.
That wall, that's it, the look down, the old highways. Years ago, all those houses were desirable places to live. In fact, if you ever watched Tony Hancock, they filmed all that series along that road.
We did that.
Yeah.
We see that again, that back wall.
That wall, do they?
I know it, yes.
And they're hoping to open it up?
Yes, but they won't, they won't, it won't be open all the time because it's a security risk. I mean, most of those places along there have got very locked gates.
Yes.
Yeah. Including our place.
See the house being restored to its former glory.
They've been working on it so long. Okay, so we're all, what was your vote?
I've one, if it's going to be an improvement, to have an improvement.
Okay. Right.
Okay, the next item, item six, preparation for S106 appointments. This is a presentation by, again by Ian Livingstone, Planning Applications Manager at TDC to the Parish Forum in September 2025. Its purpose is to set out practical steps for how Ramsgate Town Council can influence Section 106 developer contributions. The key points Town Clerk is saying is, oh, sorry, S106 funds must be specific, necessary, directly related to a development and proportionate, there is no general funding pot. RTC's influence depends on early evidence-based requests aligned with local needs and local plan policies. A proposed war councillor first alert system would ensure major applications are flagged and discussed by the Planning and Infrastructure Committee. The committee would have S106 as a standing agenda item, making recommendations even when refusal is advised. A light-touch evidence pack will be maintained to guide requests supported by indicative costs for common project types. Liaison will extend to both TDC and KCC officers where relevant. Recommendation is that the committee considers whether this proposed plan is workable and adopts it as the basis for RTC's approach to S106 contributions. Thank you, members.
Well, it all looks quite sensible to me so far. Save in how the 106 money is spent in awards.
Yes.
Councillor Shank.
I'd be my normal self, I disagree with that, well, it's been so, I'd say on that one.
Okay.
I could say a lot more, but I won't.
I think it's helpful because it's been difficult to get that information as TDC councillors, seeing how we can implement it. So now we've got a structure that will help us in both.
I mean, we've just had some in George's sixth part, on me, playground. Um, but we had no idea where that came from. I think it was a pot, that trying to get away from. Um. And that would, as it says there, it would help the acceptance of the development.
We note what we're doing.
So the recommendation, so you'll need a proposal and second, the committee considers whether this proposed plan is workable and adopts it as a basis for RTC's approach to S106 contributions. So to adopt the proposed plan as a basis for RTC's approach to 106 contributions.
Are you proposing second? All those in favour? And one abstention or against abstention?
I've written down objection, correction, that's fine, thank you.
Yes, good answer.
So your next item, members, is East Kent Design Code. This is to, is to consider how to respond to the East Kent Design Codes Town and Parish Councillor Survey, September 2025. Copy of the question is, the questions is included with the agenda pack. Within the response, members may wish to consider recommending that the shopfront design guide funded by High Street Heritage Action Zone funding in 2023 be included or formally adopted as courtesy. The draft response written by the Town Clerk based upon our neighbourhood plan is before you. And the Town Clerk has actually given that to me to give to you, it's attached to the agendas. This is, basically, the Town Clerk has written down a response if you, it's on the screen as well.
I did watch it. Um, but I would like to watch it thoroughly.
Find it in the last page, councillor.
Yeah. I don't think there's anything particular to object in it, but the thing is exactly how it relates to Ramsgate. I mean, back to the shopfront design, I'm very, very keen on that. And I've had representations from people, from local people. What I think the difficulty is, is people just go ahead and do their own shopfront.
People rip out the shopfront and then go for planning permission afterwards on the business.
Even bother going for planning permission.
Sometimes they do when they're bullied to do so, but they know they'll get it because there's so many investments to ripping out.
Because, I mean, I've got an objection into, it's the one next to plunder.
Right.
It's all white, shiny.
Right.
And it's another, mobile phone cases, shopping trolleys.
Right. Stuff. Should be going back to object again or to comment again on what was hauled. That, go, the. Before we get to some rice fish and chips, where they actually have an opportunity there to recreate something that looks like a traditional shopfront. Instead, they're going to have plate glass and.
Oh, I haven't seen the world. Oh, it's zest, is it?
It's, it's the one next door to zest.
Oh, so.
Which was whole gallery and.
Yes, that whole, that's already got a plate glass and.
Yes, already got a plate glass. We do, what they want to do is put in an extra door because they want a flat upstairs, which would allow them actually to put a proper stepped back access to either side.
Yeah.
If they thought that's it, it's come through, it's, it. It was an application, it was withdrawn and it's been resubmitted.
Okay.
But the officers didn't like it because the flat, I think, was too poky. And so they redesigned it and I haven't had a proper chance to have a look at it, but I looked to see what they'd done with the shopfront and the answer was no.
Um, sorry, can I just, this isn't just the High Street area, is it?
No.
Okay, the reason being, along Grange Road, there was a lovely coffee shop that then got turned into a flat and they completely ripped out the front. I couldn't believe that they, I didn't, I didn't see it as past as the design, so I missed it. But it's like, why were they allowed to get away with that, assuming they just turned it into a residential, uh, what's the word?
A commutation.
No, 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 we change the use, that's it, change the use. I, I'm just, I'm, you know, I'm saying that was sort of like gone past us now, but I wouldn't like it to happen in any other areas outside of the town centre. So I'm assuming this covers that as well. Okay.
They're, they're doing it all over the place and. Planners don't actually find out about it until somebody reports it. Yes, councillor Shonk.
It's been a long subject of mine to do away with the shop fronts. And we've got one up the High Street, that's going to be flats. So there we go, we're talking about shop fronts now. This chap in the High Street got the phone shop, he wants to invest in Ramsgate, we've got this leveling up fund. Put him in touch with somebody, wants to tidy up one or two empty shops at Ramsgate. And I do go to deal for quite a lot of reasons. And their town centre's thriving because they've still got their shop fronts. What we've done is opposite because we've got Westwood Cross imposed town centre on us. People that are an older persuasion want to spend their money in the town. So what we've got, we've got vape shops. So we're vaporised, we've got Turkish barbers. We've got nothing there really for people that want to shop just locally, just proven veg. The market made a bit of a difference.
Excellent practice. Personally, I, I think the High Street is a mess. But we've got an independent vodka. Independent vodka. At least two vetrers.
Yeah.
Plus the very expensive. We've got a brilliant sports centre. We've got, um.
International food shop as well.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, which I'd say to everybody such a doing.
I'm quite right in thinking that this particular part of the agenda is to look at whether the, um. East Kent Design Code is being used for shops, isn't it? Not, not what shops have we got in the area and what shops deals got. I'm quite right.
I'm sort of responding to the.
Of course.
Um. I, I mean, I, I couldn't quite see from watching that design guide how it applied to Ramsgate. And they're all things that you wouldn't object to, like there must be nurture and sustain community and that rest of it.
Exactly. When you look at the, you know, list of buzzwords at the back, and every one of them's like relevant, isn't it? Do you know what I mean? Of course you'd want all the back, you've got things like the uses of expenses, name. So on and so forth. So I can't see why we wouldn't want to adopt this, use it and.
And, and as the town clerk suggests, ask for it to be alongside the shopfront design guide, which is.
I mean, we do need to get the shopfront design guide out to estate agents.
Yes.
To, which we talked about before, I think.
Yes, that's quite important.
But at, at least, I know it's been in draft form for ages. Um. And as I say, I've gotten a lot of people shouting, a lot shouting at me, saying, why do we not? You know, why can't we not control it like they do in other places? It's like. Right, so what were we deciding here?
So your town clerk has come up with a draft response to the East Kent Design Code questionnaire. Um, as per this document that's got the seven in red.
Yeah.
Um, a starting point, so if you wanted to have a look at that and expand on it, I can add to it. Um, because you have said that we do wish the shopfront design guide funded by High Street Heritage Action Zone funding in twenty three is to be included or formally adopted as policy. So I, I will add that to that as well.
Thank you. And how does this fit in with the neighbourhood plan?
The neighbourhood plan doesn't have anything specific, it refers to the shopfront design guide again, it doesn't have anything specific.
Yes, it's supposed to be in as an addendum, but it doesn't go into detail about, no, that doesn't.
No, it's a very good point though, Pat. I mean, do we ask for it to be put in at a later date or to be considered? Because I mean, we've got to look at what goes through at the moment, what we've proposed to the council, haven't we? We can't just shove things in there willy-nilly.
Um, I've been trying to get it, add it for a while.
Have you?
And I think Tush, councillor Austin, probably knows more about the neighbourhood plan.
Well, we've, we've.
Have you finished?
Right from some considerable time ago, we've said this needs to be part of it.
Yeah.
Um, and it is part of it.
It is.
Um.
The shopfront design.
Shopfront design is in as an addendum, as I understand.
Oh, good, good.
And, and the text refers to it. And it has been out for one stage of consultation. It has to go up for a second stage of consultation, I think. And Kim is, Kim's working on that at the moment. She was working on it today.
And it will go to T D C.
Yes, it's been looked at initially by T D C who, who did the usual sort of advice, you can't say that.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'd want to be left out, I'm not, I'm not normally. It's quite odd here to have the shop fronts. But why can't we, as Ramsgate Town Council, got any control over absolute landlords so they can tidy up their empty shops, Argos?
Yeah.
I mean, it's disgusting and leafy all over the windows.
Yeah, no control.
Well, I'm sure some councillors do. I mean, people must have phoned up once or one or two and they have cleaned them up.
There have been attempts to.
They've done the Argos, didn't they? They did, they cleaned up the Argos shop recently, stained clean on the front.
And they knew, I understand, that it's been there.
Invested in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And vinyls.
Yeah.
Well, all it, all it let people know that we care about the state of our town and I do. I mean, I can't see why we can't.
Yeah.
But, yes, it's how we do it, yes.
And, and obviously people flypost all over the place, as they do, you know, and, and it's one of the issues I know that councillor Alban is trying to pick up on.
Yes.
But in terms of the vinyls etcetera, obviously you have to have permission from the, the owner and we're back to that business about.
Who is the owners?
The owners are a conglomerate based in the Cayman Islands that doesn't answer emails and that has a, as long as you are.
My husband used to drive round with the head of Pearl Assurance, which probably doesn't exist anymore, looking at what property they owned and he didn't know. They don't know what.
No idea what they.
They've no idea.
I think that was New Look, that they were the ones who owned all the Debenhams stores.
Right.
So they, you know, they just had a class list.
There, I believe there, there is legislation coming in about. It's complicated though, isn't it?
It's empty shops. The empty shops, the compulsory purchase thing, is that what you're talking about? Where a council can.
Is it compulsory?
Well, it's a, it's a kind of compulsory purchase.
Yes.
But the difficulty is, of course, raising the money to do that because you can't do that with the hundred dozen.
I don't, I don't want to be rude here, I don't think it's compulsory purchase. Some councils decide they've had enough of looking at empty shop for twenty years, but they go in there, tidy it up. And when that landlord wakes up and realises he still owns it, they will have my shop back. So the council's saying, there's the bill. That's what we've paid on your empty property. But it can be done.
Yes, and I think that's the intention of this High Street, what are they called, High Street Property Auctions, is that what it's called, something like that?
Yes.
The terminology is very confusing.
Yes.
She asked me today about the neighbourhood plan, it turned out she was asking about the plan for neighbourhoods. Well, how could she know? I mean, really?
Yes. I don't think we have any influence as a town councillor of this. Um, we're just. Press are, I wish the county council would clear up the weeds. I know they're all dying now.
You know the answer on that, I have asked about that, you've, the email was sent to Laura. Um, you've got twelve million people out of work. I mean, I'm, I'm still reading and gardening, voluntary work, and I'm seventy-six, so.
Yes, but I think, never mind. Um. Right, so what, I mean, I presume there are no objections to this response?
No, we accept it.
Adopt.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, all those.
Improvement around the town centre, I guess.
Yes, absolutely, yeah. It's difficult to know, isn't it? Because we've got most of the shops we need. Not quite all of them.
Well, there's quite a lot of work being done, isn't there, about getting some more people in.
Shops.
Yeah. Yeah, the initiative seems to be, they're working hard at it.
Well, date and time of the next meeting, just to finish off.
And the next meeting is when?
This November.
Oh, thank you.
My understanding is that the reason that the, whatever, the Argos thing cleaned up is that somebody got a, somebody wants it.
Yeah.